Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united on, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Garcia. Counselor Vido.
Present.
Counselor Avellaneda.
Present.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Perlottanda.
Yeah.
Counselor Tiara.
Present.
Counselor Robinson.
Yeah.
Counselor Bishop.
Present.
Counselor Ray Coopero.
Here.
Ten members present, Madam Chairman. First thought about business is...
Public speaking?
Public speaking.
Public speaking? Anybody for public speaking? All right, that portion of the meeting is closed, moving on. Approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes, January twenty eighth, twenty nineteen.
Counselor Lopez moves to accept and file.
Communication from the city manager. First communication, new vacant building ordinance. Dear Counselors, I am writing a request to the city council considering new ordinance pertaining to vacant buildings, both commercial and residential. The proposed ordinance would impose a significantly higher annual registration fee for these properties than currently exist, much more in line with the actual cost and impact on the city caused by the negative presence of vacant buildings. The city's current vacant building regulations merely require that an owner annually register the property and pay a one hundred dollar fee. Although this regulation has been helpful in allowing the city to keep track of vacant properties, it has not been effective in creating incentives for owners to rehabilitate the buildings. Further, the current regulation extends only to residential buildings, so it has no impact on vacant commercial structures. The proposed ordinance would substantially increase the annual registration fee for vacant buildings, varying from five hundred dollars to three thousand dollars annually, depending upon the length of the vacancy. Also, it would apply...
Counselor Rodriguez?
Read the readings and accept and file communications.
Thank you, there's something coming up under new business. Thank you, Counselor. I'm sorry?
I'd like to have this go to conference.
Well, there's an order under new business so that we can send the order to new business.
Okay.
Yeah. Counselor Robinson?
All these from A to K I are going to be coming up under new business. Can we have one order to move them all and then bring them up under new business?
With the exception of the CIP, Leo, we have the CIP next.
Okay, except the CIP.
So let's do the CIP and then we'll do that, okay?
We have a communication received from the city manager regarding the capital improvement program FY twenty to FY twenty twenty four. That's the CIP before you know it. What, accept and file is CIP and move at the conference? Move at the conference and schedule a public hearing?
And schedule a public hearing.
And schedule a public hearing, Leo Robinson, okay. Right.
Seeing none.
Okay. Now you have all the communications, what you have an order for under new business each and every one. You want to accept them all under suspension?
Okay. Are there any objections or...
Anyone that you want read? Any special one you want read or you want them all read? Which one?
The parking study.
And also the state of the city address. They're not all under new business, actually.
Yeah.
So maybe...
The parking study you want read. Let me get that.
So can we do C through E? Any objections to C through E being accepted and filed?
Okay, with the exception of the parking, we'll pull that out and read it.
C, D, and E. Because one of them is for short-term rentals. These are all zoning proposals that the city manager has given to us, but there's something coming up under new business. If you would prefer for it to be read, that's fine, it was just for the matter of time.
I'm not looking for them to be read, I've read them already.
You want the titles read of the...
Yeah, just the titles.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm going to set aside the parking study, I'll read that for you. We have the short-term rentals, that's one of the ordinances going in. Then we have the ordinance changes for facades, signage, and outdoor seating. That's another ordinance proposal. Then we have an order introduced for another request for appropriation of the overlay surplus. We have requests for a state of the city address. Traffic congestion near Meridian Street. You want that? Okay, off the left side. Notice of waiver intent, we have to... We have nothing to do on it, yeah. Just accept, just accept under suspension. The waiver intent. Because it's beyond the amount of time anyway, so...
For the position of IT systems analyst?
Okay, Leo Robinson?
Yeah?
Yeah, it's fine.
And then we have...
Miscellaneous.
Miscellaneous financial reports.
Appointments, oh no.
Okay.
Yep.
Now, you have to... Those are all set, so those are going to under suspension.
Yeah, accept and file.
Let me just... Now you have appointments to boards and commissions, and someone will have to refer that to a second reading. Anyone?
I'll move it to a second reading. Under suspension, if there's no objections.
Is that the study, the parking study?
No, the appointments.
This is the appointments to boards and commissions, it's referred to a second reading.
Are you going to go back and read the traffic congestion?
No, yeah, I just have a couple more.
Did you just finish the whole?
Solid waste collection by the DPW and request for a conflict interest law exemption.
Counselor Coopero, what do you wish to do with the communication from the city manager regarding the solid waste collection? Accept and file the communication? Okay. Under suspension.
And now, let me see, we just, I want to act separately on this one, too. Request for conflict interest, it's something under new business, I believe in that one, too.
Yep, correct. So Counselor Robinson moves.
Yeah, suspension.
Yep.
Okay. Now, the separate ones we have pulled aside. Traffic congestion near Meridian Street. I am writing in response to your council order requesting that the city seek to alleviate traffic congestion in the area near the Meridian Street Bridge as well as at the intersection of Pearl Park and Congress. I will discuss each area separately. The city previously receiving funding from the Massachusetts Gaming Commission to conduct a comprehensive transportation study on the Beecham Street William Street corridor, which included within its scope the intersection of Williams, Marginal, Pearl, and Meridian Streets. With that study now concluded, the city has recommendations for improving this important intersection. The improvements include some realignment of the intersection as well as smart traffic signals and new lane markings. The city is currently working on the design for these improvements. Funding is available from a combination of CIP and the CDBG funds. The city hopes to conclude the design work this year with the goal of starting construction on these improvements early in twenty twenty. Unfortunately, the intersection of Pearl Park and Congress has not been comprehensively studied, at least not any time in the recent past. As a precursor to any design improvements, the city does intend to undertake such an analysis. At present, no funds are set aside for this purpose. Prior to this council order, the city did plan to include the cost of study for this area and next year's CDBG application submitted in the winter of twenty twenty. However, that means the study wouldn't commence until late twenty twenty, with actual improvements taking shape in the ensuing years. I have no objection to advancing this timeline, but it would mean utilizing existing free cash for this purpose. We anticipate the cost of such a study to be in seventy-five thousand to one hundred thousand dollar range. Please let me know how the council wishes proceed.
Counselor Avellaneda?
And I appreciate...
What's your motion?
I motion to send a subcommittee in conjunction with the parking study meeting. There's two separate orders here, communications. One was a parking study, which we were informed by the city manager that we only had one answer or response to the RFP, and that there is a suggestion that the, rather than doing something citywide, that we curtail it and just try to focus on particular neighborhoods in the city to get a better job and also possibly save money. At the same time, there's a separate communication about traffic congestion, and I'd like to have that meeting that we have, the subcommittee, just together. I think that we can do both. Given the backlog that we have of so many subcommittee meetings, it makes sense to try to combine these. I think we can tackle both situations and both topics. If there's no objection to combining them. I'm speaking on the communication about the traffic congestion because I, like Counselor Coopero, have filed similar orders, asking about, can the city do something? Can the traffic board themselves do something about the traffic that's been going on in this particular area, at the entryways on the circuit road? And similarly have been told, we're in the middle of a traffic study with the casino that's been paid for, until then, let's not make any kind of changes. First and foremost, now that the study has been done, I'd like to get a copy of that study. I'd like to see what that study says. It says here in the communication that it's been conducted and it's now concluded, and the recommendations made were just to do some improvements to the intersections. Says nothing about changing the ways. It says nothing about deterring traffic from outside the city, from over the bridge. So that's one part that bothers me, and so I'm looking forward to the discussion. The second part that bothers me is that it states Pearl Park and Congress have not been comprehensively studied in recent time, which again, let's go back two years, three years, and we were in the middle of looking at a two-way project for Broadway. And they pointed to a circular motion of traffic, this is why we needed to do two-way, and this is why we're having all these problems, and we have to deter the traffic that's going around down Broadway, along Park, up Pearl, onto Hawthorne. Well then, which one is it? Did you do a comprehensive study of the traffic that included this area that was supposed to be part of the Broadway two-way? Because if you did a proper two-way study, and you're making all these suggestions that led you to tell me two-way was the best way, then Park and Pearl and Congress was part of it, because that's what you said in your plans was part of it. So how can you now come to me and say that the request by this council, repeated request, to address traffic, commuter traffic from outside the city, we can't make any suggestions on Park Square because we've never studied it? Well then what? Then what did you do on the Broadway study? When it was part of the suggestion and in the diagrams? So I have a lot of questions about what's going on here, of how you can't come up with suggestions of Park Square when it was supposed to be, or was, according to conversations, part of the two-way Broadway? Now you're telling me it wasn't part of it? How? When we knew that was part of it? So, you know, again, I share the frustration because I'm sitting in it. I don't go, I try not to drive around the city at seven o'clock in the morning, eight o'clock. I try not to drive around the city at two o'clock, and I try not to drive around the city at five o'clock, because it's ridiculous out there and there's too much traffic going on. And yet, we're still getting, I think, lip service here in the form of, well, we're just going to redo, you know, this grand traffic study that was supposed to be done by the casino, we're only going to do a new intersection. That's not enough for me. So I'm looking forward to the, you know, to that conference, to get some real solutions. I've suggested many times to change the directions of William Street and Marginal ahead of the casino, something, because it's going to be very bad. So anyway, these are the main concerns, and again, I'm really surprised. I can't wait to read the study that was done after three years waiting and see what they've come up with. Thank you.
I agree with Rachel. When we first proposed this, they said that we're going to do the study around that area, but I haven't seen any study done, they haven't told us anything, how to fix it, so I don't know what they intend to tell us, how they're going to fix it, how, what they're going to do. But they should have been already, like he says, for three years, they should have told us, some way of at least alleviating the problem that's being there all the time. There must be some sort of solution to help the people that live in that area. I can't, I live in that area, and it takes me sometimes twenty minutes to go from Broadway to Essex Street, because I can't cross, there's cars from all sides, you can't go. And the only way to go to Essex Street is one way, that's the way to go. You can't, if you're coming from Broadway, you can't go no other way. And it's the same thing when you're coming down from Congress Ave, and you try to go to Broadway, and you can't move at all. It's like a bottleneck. And they said that we're going to do a study, just like fellow counselors said, but there's no study ever done. So I hope when we go to conference and we'll figure out how to do the study and how to fix the situation for the people that live in that area, or for the people of Chelsea in general that use that area.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Bishop? Your microphone, please.
We were asked to approve a concept, I believe, of Broadway being a two-way, and had we said yes, I assume that study would have gone forward. The money wasn't spent on the study because the concept was not approved. That is my understanding of the situation. I know there was no study done because this board said, no, we don't want to go along with a two-way Broadway. So had we said yes, I think you would have seen a comprehensive study of Park, Pearl in that area. But, you know, as I said, we didn't say yes, so that leaves... I go to that way a lot myself, I go to East Boston often, and it's a nightmare trying to get over there. You have to try not to get caught on the bridge when it's going up and down. And, you know, something needs to be done there, and something needs to be done on Eastern Avenue. I don't know if you folks have noticed, but every morning, I have the opportunity to drive some relatives to the airport when they're going away on trips, and I was by there at six o'clock in the morning the other day, and it was stopped dead all the way down Eastern Avenue. I did a U-turn and went up the other way on the rear porch Parkway. You can't get out, you can't get into East Boston in the morning. They call them smart lights, I guess, I don't know. Thank you.
Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be quick, I agree with the counselors. I think, again, when we had the uproar regarding the two-way conversion on Broadway, that the residents felt like they were out of touch with what was going on. Again, from the reaction from the council body here, the folks who's doing these studies, they still have not figured out how to engage the city council or the residents in their study and their review. So I just think moving forward, we should emphasize how important it is, whether they come before us or come and make it available for the public to be aware of some of these studies, and when they are taking place, then I think we'll feel more comfortable with it. I know it's frustrating. I've sat there in traffic coming over the bridge from Meridian Street. If the bridge go up, you're just in traffic, you bite your hand, your fingernails, and you just hold on. But it's frustrating, but again, if we're going to try to work together, we have to really be engaged in this so we won't be making these statements here like, hey, what the heck's going on? I think they do, it's a poor job of engaging the city council because we have to be responsive to our constituents. And again, we just can't, I just can't vote on this the way it is or accept it the way it is, so I look forward to the discussion in the subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Robinson?
I'm pleased to see that we're actually going to go to conference on it. I'm a little disappointed that we only got one company to respond to the RFP, and my feeling is that we should go back out and re-advertize if we're going to be doing a study.
Any other counselors? Counselor Lopez?
I'm not going to speak about the study, but I'm just going to speak up about the traffic. Small area from Park Street to Broadway, that's a nightmare there. Takes like twenty minutes just to go that block there. Park Street, also, what I would like to say is, maybe Mr. Ambrosino talked to Chief of Police and maybe have an officer on Broadway and in Congress there, because that's the problem, that's where all the traffic gets congested.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else?
Are we talking just on the...
The parking study? And the parking study?
And the parking study. You wanted to combine them, right?
Combine?
They're coming up under new business too far.
You want to combine them at the conference?
At the conference.
He sent them both to a subcommittee on conference.
We're talking about them separately, though, am I right? Can't talk about two things at once.
So he wants to talk about the other piece of it?
Okay, so what are you looking for? Are you looking to speak on the other matter?
Well, yes.
Okay, all right, so go ahead.
What was the motion for this?
He sent them both to a subcommittee on conference.
They were both sent to a subcommittee.
What subcommittee?
On conference.
Subcommittee on the whole.
Well, I am a little disappointed, too, that the rest of the city isn't included, you know, wasn't included in this proposal that was put in. I thought the whole idea of it was to do a citywide parking study, that's what I was told. This is not a citywide parking study, so I guess this RFP should go into the revolving filing. And then probably we should go out again. But the price tag, too, to me is ridiculous. I thought it was ridiculous to say a hundred thousand to do a citywide study. I mean, we don't want them to map every car that's on the street, we just want a rough idea of what, where the parking problems are and what should be done about them. I don't think that takes two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars. I think, I also believe we should throw it out.
Thank you. Moving on? Next order of business?
Under communications and petitions to the council, we have a copy of a communication received from Traffic and Parking Clerk Jeanette Centron White regarding the actions approved at the February fifth, twenty nineteen Traffic and Parking Commission meeting.
Chair recognizes Counselor Vido.
I will just have to file the communication under suspension, if there are no objections.
We have committee reports, unfinished business, and second readings coming up.
Chair recognizes Counselor Avellaneda?
I'd like to take out of subcommittee the order, ordinance, I'm sorry, a order that I had introduced to amend the issue of licenses to marijuana establishments, and if I could speak on that.
We have a motion.
Yes, the floor?
Yes, we have a motion.
What's the motion?
Motion to take out of subcommittee on conference.
It's on the floor, we need a motion to adopt.
Oh, a motion to adopt.
Okay. Go ahead, you have the floor.
Thank you. So, as I had made it into the original introduction, this is an amendment to the current marijuana ordinance in the city of Chelsea. And the amendment that I propose is one that is being undertaken both by Somerville and by Boston. They are moving to reserve a certain number of licenses, retail marijuana licenses, for residents of that municipality. Now, the number that I have proposed here is two. We have four licenses that are available for retail, and this ordinance would amend, would reserve two of those licenses for Chelsea residents or a business, or an entity, an LLC, whatever, however they want to organize the business entity, with sixty percent of the ownership being a Chelsea resident. Now, you know, the proposal, as it is, we've, as others have made in the other communities, is very simple to explain, and that is that we have seen well-funded and politically-connected individuals in the state and outside the state being able to go after these licenses in this rush for this brand-new industry that is currently taking hold of Massachusetts. And the licensing process in itself is very complicated, it takes a lot of time. By reserving two of the licenses for Chelsea residents or a Chelsea-based business, there are, and I believe, inherent benefits to Chelsea as a whole. One, I think we would get better host agreements. One can argue that someone who is local, someone who has connections to the community, is going to go above and beyond what our current regulations and laws dictate are required from the petitioner in a host agreement. And I think they'll do that because they're part of the community. Second, they have a familiarity of the workforce. If they're from here, more likely to go above and beyond the mandated hire requirement. There's always the argument also that the fact that the money's made from these licenses would actually be staying in Chelsea. Imagine you have these wealthy, well-connected individuals from outside the city, whether they be from the western part, northern part, or eastern part of the state, and all of a sudden, they're making money here in Chelsea, but they're just taking it and sucking it out. So the idea is that the money would stay here in our community. I think we've, can recognize in so many other situations, who makes a better neighbor, whether it's someone who's from the community or not. I take, for example, an absentee landlord versus a landlord who's actually living in a multifamily. Do you want the landlord who's, we've seen, just on property, that more than likely, we don't have as many issues from a landlord as actually living here in Chelsea versus an absentee? They're more likely to give back, they're more likely to have access to the community. Instead of hiding behind some business entity, we'll actually know who they are and more be able to have, you know, better connection and access to them. Now, this is consistent, this policy, or this idea, is very consistent to what the city has done in the past. We've argued for businesses to hire local. We actually passed the city council recently to have a one-hundred percent hiring requirement of all new police and fire. We argue in front of the zoning and planning boards that when a developer such as the neighborhood developers builds affordable housing, that those units are for Chelsea folks, not for outsiders. This is very consistent in saying, okay, now we're going to have these licenses, why not save them for Chelsea people, just like we do in so many other cases? Now, I don't think we'll lose any opportunity in reserving this for two years. My ordinance for my amendment has a two-year sunset meaning that if no Chelsea group comes forward within the next two years, or no organization partners up with locals in the next two years, then it goes back to the general public to wide open. So I don't think that Chelsea will lose anything, it has more to win than lose, and I hope that we, you know, copy what other communities are doing, which is, we're taking care of our own. So with that, I hope that my colleagues will support this, and hopefully we retain the benefits of this brand-new industry for our own people. Thank you.
Counselor Vido?
I have a motion to amend. Better. Let me stand up. Would you like me to explain?
You want me to read it?
Oh, yeah, even better.
This is the amendment offered by Counselor Vido. Amendment, within two years of the passage of this ordinance, the Licensing Commission shall hold two adult-use recreational retail licenses for an applicant owned by a Chelsea resident or entities with a majority, at least sixty percent of its ownership made up of Chelsea residents, and/or meet the qualifications or eligibility of the Commonwealth Economic Empowerment Program as mandated by the Cannabis Control Commission. These licenses shall only be sold at... These licenses shall only be sold or transferred to another Chelsea residence, uh, residence or entities with a majority, at least sixty percent of its ownership made up of Chelsea residents, and/or meet the qualifications of the eligibility of the Commonwealth Economic Empowerment Program as mandated by the Cannabis Control Commission.
So, may I, can I speak on it?
Alright.
Thank you. Um, so, okay. So just, just for people who are watching at home, I just want to make sure that we're, um, that I make, that we're being as transparent as possible. Um, currently on the books, it says that we are saving two of our four licenses, um, up to two of our four licenses for economic empowerment certificate holders. What that is, is that the state decided that, you know, in the nineties with the war on drugs and the, and the, the laws against marijuana, there, communities like Chelsea were, um, disproportionately affected, more so than, than, than any other community, by people being arrested and have criminal records, not being able to find jobs because they have criminal records for an arrest that now, if you are in the business, you're making millions of dollars of it. So, so, in order to protect those communities, they, they came up with these six different, uh, pieces of criteria. Um, if you come from a, a neighborhood that was disproportionately affected by the war on drugs, um, if you'd been arrested, there's three, six different criteria. If you met three of those six criteria, the state would give you an economic empowerment certificate. What that means is that when you go and apply for a license, you get bumped up to the top, and they waive some of the fees, you save you like five thousand dollars, and you get a leg up. So, the problem was that that window of opportunity was only open from April first to April fifteenth, and so there were a lot of people that didn't get it. And then the people that did get it don't have the capital to be able to start, um, their own business. So, I can understand what Counselor Avi Janeda is saying as far as trying to, um, you know, help out Chelsea residents, considering that we have been disproportionately affected by those old laws. Um, however, I just think it's not, first of all, I don't think that we have the ability to dictate to a business who they sell to, um, or, or interfere or impede with their right to commerce. I feel like we're walking a very fine line, I'm pretty sure we're violating, uh, constitutional law there, um, and limiting a business owner's ability to be able to sell the business in the end. If you, if, if I own a business, a marijuana establishment, and I want to sell it, and someone in Lawrence wants to give me five million dollars, but I'm limited to the one-point-five million that they can give me locally, I just feel like we're cutting businesses off at the knees, and I don't think that we should be doing that. I, I just kinda think that we're walking a fine line. Um, secondly, to, if, if the, if the ordinance mentions, um, kind of like, um, a way to rectify, the way that the, the prohibition laws that were in the past, but to talk about this in that way, we're really trying to do a social equity program. It just doesn't make sense to not acknowledge the fact that many of the people that were affected by this in the nineties have been gentrified out of the community. And so, what sense does it make to be able to give the benefit to the new, more affluent Chelsea residents, and with all due respect, but that are coming into the city after people like us, the poor people of Chelsea, were the ones that bore that impact of, of those old laws? And so, what I'm suggesting is, um, because I understand the importance of it, is that we add, not only that you're a Chelsea resident, but and/or that you also are eligible to, um, meet that, and you meet the criteria that's set forth within the State Cannabis Control Commission. Um, yeah, I, again, I just, I think I said everything I needed to say. Um, I can understand Somerville and Boston doing it, Boston is huge, Chelsea is one-point-eight square miles. I just think like, it just, it just, I can understand. But if this is truly about social equity, then I think that we really need to be realistic. Many of the people who bore, um, the impact of those old laws have had to live outside of the city. So if they want to move out of the city because they were priced out, if they now want to invest in the city, can they not? I just think we're limiting it, and I just want to make sure that, um, that we're being fair. So my, my amendment is to add the economic empowerment, um, program. As it stands right now, there are, it's already, it's already there, but I just want to make sure that we're including it in this amendment. Thank you.
Counselor Cooper?
Amendment offered by Counselor Ray Cooper. Within two years of the passage of this ordinance, the Licensing Commission shall hold one adult-use recreational retail license for an applicant owned by a Chelsea resident or entities with a majority, at least sixty percent of its ownership made up of Chelsea residents. These licenses shall only be sold or transferred to another Chelsea residence or entity with a majority, at least sixty percent of its ownership made up of Chelsea residents.
I, in a way, I agree with my fellow counsel, but I believe two licenses too many. One license should be plenty. If you're only allowing four, so if you're gonna hold two, what is the point of having all these licenses? I thought the city was giving licenses for them to make money, not to hold, to lose money. So, if, if you're gonna do it, I agree with what the fellow counselor says, but I believe that one, one license should be plenty, not two. And my amendment says to have one license, not two. Two is too many to hold. Half of, half of that licenses, I don't think it's a good idea for the city overall to have two. But one is plenty. If you only have four, we're not like, my fellow counselor says, we're not Boston, they got twenty, thirty. We only have four licenses, so why limit the amount that you have? You know, don't limit it so much. At, at least one is fair, you know? But two is too many.
Counselor Bishop?
Um, my feeling on the matter is that, um, there is nobody clamoring from Chelsea now for such a license. Uh, we asked that of the city solicitor in conference, and I guess they had a couple of the local people inquire, but were then later informed that those people were no longer interested. The marijuana business right now is hot in Massachusetts, there's no question. But how long is it going to stay hot is the whole question. Two years from now, it could be dead. And there could be no demand, or no one looking to spend this kind of money on a license to operate in Chelsea. It's very difficult, I think, to compare us to Somerville or to Boston because of, we only have four licenses here, four. Boston, I'm sure, has thirty, and Somerville probably has sixteen. That's the, you know, the numbers that were mentioned to me by someone. So we're talking about four licenses now. As the City Council, we want the city to capitalize on those four licenses. So the city is requiring anyone interested to put up, in advance, three hundred thousand dollars in cash to get one of these licenses as part of the city's three percent of their business. We're allowed to get, derive a profit of three percent of their total business. Certainly, they're hoping that we get more than that three hundred thousand in a year. Hopefully, it'll be five hundred thousand. But like I say, it's not gonna stay a hot business forever, nothing ever does. In two years, my feeling is, we may have missed the boat, we may be sitting here holding two licenses. And what good is that gonna do the city in any, any imagination? Nothing. I can't think of a, of a good thing to have four licenses and only have two of them out there. We have no requirements on any other license that's issued by the Licensing Commission for liquor licenses or anything like that, that you have to be a local resident. There's no, no restriction on that at all. And I think it's silly, really, to require something like this to have to be a local resident. Because, you know, who's gonna prove, how are you gonna prove they're local residents? I could go rent an apartment next month down at One North if I could afford it, and I'm a Chelsea resident now. You know, that's, those aren't Chelsea people, uh, is that what you're trying to do? Get jobs, I hope, I'm hoping these people will employ Chelsea people? I have faith in the Licensing Commission. If there's a local group that, you know, is looking for a license, I think they will give them the preference. They're gonna certainly pick a local group over someone from out of town. So I, I, you know, I think we have to trust in their judgment a little bit. So, you know, I'm gonna vote no on all of the amendments and the motion. And let's hope it stays hot for two years, but I don't think it's going to.
Counselor Vido?
I just wanna say that I do not feel comfortable, and I will not be voting in favor of just preserving the licenses for Chelsea residents. I believe that we're opening ourselves up to a lawsuit. I believe that we don't have the right to dictate to businesses who they, uh, conduct business with, or, 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 I think we'll be limiting their ability, um, to attract investors. Um, so if it has to do with Chelsea residents only, I will not be in support. And I just wanted to make sure I said that.
You already spoke.
Counselor Belotanda? Counselor Belotanda?
Gee, thanks.
Yeah.
I mean, this is a great thing that Chelsea's getting four licenses so we can monopolize on the money that it's gonna bring to Chelsea. But yeah, I can see us giving Chelsea residents a preference, you know, like we wave everything else around here. You know, like, more or less like, first come, first served. Chelsea residents puts in their application, somebody else puts in their application, yes, let's give them a fair shake if they can go along with it. But holding licenses for two years, I don't see it, you know, possible. And the other thing too is, if we give it to Chelsea residents, who is gonna make the assumptions that they live here? Like Mr. Bishop says, you know, yeah, I live like the police and fire. Yeah, I live in Chelsea, but where do you live? Oh, I live in my grandmother's house down the street, but do you really live in your grandmother's house? Or do you live in New Hampshire? Oh, the fire department, oh, yeah. I live in my uncle's place across town in Chelsea, but do I really live there? Or live somewhere else? So who's gonna do all the residential, you know, applications for all of these licenses? Who's gonna manage that they live, they live there? Is somebody gonna go buy their house, you know, and check on them to make sure they're there and they're a Chelsea resident? I, I don't see it happening, so I'm kind of against the whole thing.
Uh, Counselor Robinson?
I mean, I think the two amendments are great, I think Roy's, uh, ordinance is great, but I have some concerns about what is a resident. So if I, somebody decides to move to Chelsea tomorrow and comes up with the sixty percent, there's no mechanism for us to say, well, wait a minute, you just moved to Chelsea. So, we didn't go far enough by spelling out what is a resident to be able to monopolize. If we're looking to monopolize for the people in Chelsea, I think we gotta, had to go a little bit further than just putting an amendment out there and nothing in regards to spelling out what is a resident. Um, you know, I think, you know, I, it is, it is a hot industry. I haven't seen many Chelsea folk come forward looking to do anything. It's a lot of money to, um, come up with, and if you, you look at it realistically, I could get a building today, have an agreement with a landlord, and if I have to start paying ten thousand dollars a month rent before I even get to first base, I mean, that's a lot of money to put out and not actually get to the finish line. So, I'm up in the air about it.
Counselor Avi Janeda?
I believe I'm just speaking on the Recuperos, Counselor Recuperos amendment right now. That's what we're voting on.
Mm-hmm, yes.
In which sections, thank you. And on that motion to, um, lower it down to one, uh, I'll be voting against it. I don't think that, um, asking fifty percent of the licenses in Chelsea be reserved for, uh, an opportunity to Chelsea residents or business, Chelsea-based, uh, business is asking for too much. I think twenty-five percent is too low. You didn't ask, you didn't, you know, no one here said, you know, we should only have twenty-five percent of the police and fire be residents. You asked for a hundred percent. So why didn't you say the same thing? Why is twenty-five percent okay on, you know, the, the ability for a city to give licenses, but on hiring our own, we have a much higher threshold? When we talked to TND, and they're building their affordable housing units, we didn't say only twenty-five percent of the housing should be for Chelsea folks. We pushed them all the way as, as, uh, as high as seventy. So I don't understand why we're lowering the bar and the opportunity, which, again, is only for two years. You know, guess what? The California business is still rolling, literally, for as far as marijuana goes. It didn't end up. It's still going. I don't see Calif, you know, Colorado, again, is booming. And it's two, more than two years since they've been going. So the idea that this industry is going to somehow disappear in the next two years, or we'll miss the boat and miss money, or whatever, that you have nothing to point to out there in the industry that says so. Look at California, look at Colorado, look at every other state that's adopted it, and it's still a flourishing business. Again, use the pun. Um, so I don't think that we're asking too much. I think, you know, for two years, to say, hold it, and fifty percent is, I, I think it's too, you know, it's too bad. Now, are there restrictions on licenses elsewhere? Yes. Again, take a look at Boston. Former City Councilor, now Congresswoman, Ayanna Pressley, she pushed for alcohol licenses in, um, lower-income communities because they felt that the licenses in general in Boston were all very expensive, too expensive to open up a restaurant in those other parts of Boston, and they had to go to the legislature, and they restricted those licenses for those particular neighborhoods. Not only did they restrict it, they've said that you can't sell it. So if I give a restaurateur in Roxbury a license, that a special license that was issued for you because we're treating you so that you can, uh, have some economic development in Roxbury, you can't then flip it to a guy who wants to open up a restaurant in the North End for more money? No, that doesn't work that way. So, it's out there, a similar restriction here is fair. We're saying, we're gonna hold the licenses for two years, and if we give you this opportunity to make money, you can't flip it and then give it to somebody else for more money because we reserved it for you and we ask you to do the same. It's very common out there, and no one's getting sued because, again, just like when you get an affordable condo unit or an affordable house, they gave someone an opportunity to own a house at a low rate. They don't then turn around and flip it for thousands of dollars more than the affordable rate. So it's common, it's done. My only question is, why aren't we doing it for our own folks? Why aren't we providing this benefit, this opportunity, and reserving it for our own folks? It's very simple. Save it for our folks. Fifty percent is a very low number. I wish we could save all of them for our own folks. But, you know, I think fifty percent, similar to what other communities are doing, is fair. Thank you.
Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Uh, first of all, I agree with my colleague from District One, um, and I also agree with some part of the President of the Council on conditions. I think the conditions are unfair. I don't think we have the legal right to have these conditions. I understand we have some grounds, but I know our responsibilities have already been met. We are, I mean, the voters of the City of Chelsea voted in favor of this initiative. It was on the two thousand and sixteen statewide election, not by a big margin, but they won. And cities that won was able to do according to what the initiative stated. You have a certain percentage of marijuana licenses for how many liquor licenses you have. Nowhere, I mean, now, so, nowhere did it come up and say that we had to extend additional conditions. I mean, I've been very quiet about a lot of the discussion, but I've been to all, pretty much, all of the hearings. And I just think that our job has been done. We have set aside certain areas, certain locations where these places could be held at, would be operated at. And that's how, truly, that's really our function of this matter. Um, but as elected officials, we do have say-so, and that's why we're all speaking, and that's why we're talking about it. And I just think, you know, a few reasons is that if you have, you know, four licenses, and you're gonna say, really, let's put on two licenses on hold for two years? I mean, it could, the, the bottom could go out of this. I mean, Chelsea's not as big as California, and it's sure not as big as Boston, nor is it big, big as Somerville. So that takes us out of that ballpark. We're a small city, there's other communities around here. Once Boston, once Somerville, once Lynn, once Salem start getting these dispensaries, you know what? Chelsea will be a, maybe, or, what's that word? A place that you can get to, maybe, where you don't wanna go to those other places? But it's not gonna make a whole lot of difference where people go, it's legalized. Folks are gonna go to where the dispensaries are. Um, I'll be voting no on the two to be held. I'll be voting, considering voting one on to be held, because I think if we're gonna be fair, that's fair. We can't tie up all this, we, we, we just can't tie it all up. We just can't wait two years and wait till someone in Chelsea build up equity, build up money, build up a location, thinking that, oh my God, I'm Chelsea resident, they're gonna give it to me, the only thing I have to do now is get the place and get these, um, what we call suppliers, and also investors. Investors, nowhere does it say the investors have to be from Chelsea. Someone, even myself, someone from Kelvin, you got a place, I'll come in, you're a resident, you can buy into this. So let's not be, I mean, let's not be naive here, let's be fair here. If we wanna be fair here, it's an open market, that's what it is, it's an open market. People in Chelsea said they wanted- People in Chelsea said they wanted it on 2016 election ballot, and we have, did what we were supposed to do, make places where it could be centrally located. I mean, that was tough. But as I look around here, seriously, I don't see a lot of residents up here saying, hey, we want it in Chelsea. We want to have people Chelsea own. Look at this here, really. Not a lot, I mean, how many times do you have to ask for public speaking today? This is an issue that if people were really concerned that they wanted to have it in Chelsea that bad, or they wanted to have Chelsea residents or ownership in it, this place, our community is very active. Seriously, our community is very active, and so I think if the Chelsea really wanted us 11 city council members to hear what they had to say about having a resident own a business in Chelsea with this, they would have been here. They're not here, so they say, you know what? I elected you 11 from different districts and at large to make a decision. So my decision today is I'll be voting no on the two. I'll be voting, you know, still up in the air on the one, but I think our job is already done, and I'm going to let the people that want to come in with the best proposals, our license department, our planning department, and most importantly still, our zoning department. We asked them to zone it in certain areas. Now the zoning has to say, okay, you met the zoning requirement by the city council. So that's what I'll be voting for today. Thank you.
You already spoke. Okay, so at this point, we're going to vote, we're going to have a roll call vote on Giovanni's...
Amendment.
Amendment?
Want me to read the amendment again?
Please.
Within two years of the passage of this ordinance, the Licensing Commission shall hold one adult-use recreational retail license for an applicant owned by a Chelsea resident or entities with a majority, at least 60% of its ownership made up of Chelsea residents. These licenses shall only be sold or transferred to another Chelsea resident or entities with a majority, at least 60% of its ownership made up of Chelsea residents.
Okay, just for clarification purposes?
Who requested the roll call? Giovanni?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, it was Giovanni.
Okay, if you vote yes, you're adopting the amendment. If you vote no, you're denying this amendment.
Amendment?
What was it?
So this is the one to make it into one license? Yeah.
Want me to explain it again?
Please.
If you vote yes, you're adopting this amendment by Counselor Recupero. If you vote no, you're voting against it, and we'll go on to the next amendment. Counselor Garcia absent. Counselor Vido?
No.
Counselor Abzaneda?
No.
Counselor Rodriguez?
No.
Counselor Lopez?
Nope.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Perlatonda?
Yes.
Counselor Tejada?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop?
No.
Counselor Recupero?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five in favor, one, two, three, four, five opposed, one absent, motion is defeated. The next amendment offered introduced by Counselor Vido. You want me to read it?
Yes, please.
Amendment, within two years of the passage of this ordinance, the Licensing Commission shall hold two adult-use recreational retail licenses for an applicant owned by a Chelsea resident or entities with a majority, at least 60% of its ownership made up of Chelsea residents, and/or meet the qualifications or eligibility of the Commonwealth Economic Empowerment Program as mandated by the Cannabis Control Commission. These licenses shall only be sold or transferred to another Chelsea residence or entity with a majority, at least 60% of its ownership made up of Chelsea residents, and/or meet the qualifications or the eligibility of the Commonwealth Economic Empowerment Program as mandated by the Cannabis Control Commission. A yes vote would be to approve, a no vote would be to deny, and then we'll go on to the actual vote of the... Counselor Garcia absent, Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor Abzaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
No.
Counselor Perlatonda?
No.
Counselor Tejada?
Yes.
Counselor Robertson?
No.
Counselor Bishop?
No.
Counselor Recupero?
No.
One, two, three, four, five in favor, one, two, three, four, five opposed, one absent, the amendment is defeated. On the actual ordinance introduced by Counselor Abzaneda, we have a roll call requested by Counselor Abzaneda. A yes vote would be to adopt, and a no vote would be to deny. Counselor Garcia absent, Counselor Vido?
No.
Counselor Abzaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
No.
Counselor Brown?
No.
Counselor Perlatonda?
No.
Counselor Tejada?
No.
Counselor Robinson?
No.
Counselor Bishop?
No.
Counselor Recupero?
No.
Two in favor, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight opposed, one absent, the order is defeated. Counselor Brown. Counselor Brown?
I'm sorry.
Unfinished business?
Yeah, adopt that. Can I take that out of conference, please?
You want to take your orders, the financial orders from conference?
For roll call vote, please.
No objections to the roll call vote on the financial matters?
Do you want to have them all at once, or?
Hold on. What's your question, Counselor?
Question, are they considered a second reading or?
Yes, it's a second reading.
Counselor Bishop is saying that they're not...
Committee on Finance.
They were signed by the counselor.
Doesn't matter.
And that's the first reading.
These were sent to a second reading.
That's right.
These are not today's, these are from unfinished business from last meeting.
If they weren't signed, they were never introduced, but these were signed and sent there. Now they're pulling them out and it's a second reading.
On the 18th, I believe it was.
That shouldn't be.
Well, they signed them, it's not my fault.
If they were not sent to a second reading?
They were sent to the Subcommittee on Conference. You don't have to refer them on a second reading. At the first reading, if you don't send them to conference, it's automatically a second reading.
We had a conference on it today, Counselor.
Right. You could do what you want with it.
Counselor, you were here, you were actually the one that sent it in.
Counselor, so you sent them to a...
I thought this was the first reading.
So no, they were read at the last meeting and he sent it to a Subcommittee. What the clerk is saying is that this is considered the second reading.
Because they were signed.
So we already had one reading at the last meeting?
When they were, when we read them out loud and counsel, they were moved to the Subcommittee.
And you're voting on things before you get to even ask a question?
We didn't vote on anything.
You didn't vote on it?
Well, we did vote on it, it was moved to a second reading. First reading is a vote.
No, so Counselor, if I can explain, I'll try to explain anyway. So Counselor, the last meeting, I actually stepped out. I asked you as the former chair of the Finance and Accounts if you could send them to, accept them and send them to the committee. This afternoon, we had a meeting on it, and we brought them in today. This is the second reading on it, and I asked that they be brought out of conference and voted on today.
Why don't we suspend the rules and ask the city solicitor to address the council and clarify it for us, please?
So procedurally, Madam Chair, is that the city council, when something is on the agenda for that first night, consider it's the first reading. It does not normally get debated upon, especially if it's a financial matter, because under the charter, you have to have two readings for financial matters. So you can either send it to a second automatically, it would go anyway, or you could send it to Subcommittee or public hearing. Most often, we don't do it by public hearing.
But when it's read, it's considered the first reading?
But once it's read, it's considered the first reading, just like everything else, zoning amendments and everything else that tends to come before the city council. It's only not a first reading if there's a formal objection to the first reading on the floor.
Okay.
I'm not sure if that was recorded, but I don't recall it being objected to that night.
Okay. Are we clear? Do we have any other questions for the city solicitor? All right, hang on one second. Counselor Bishop, and can you speak into the microphone, please?
Do we do a lone order?
You're not required to have two votes on that?
A lone order also. That's also in the charter as, not two votes, two readings, one vote, and you usually vote at the second reading.
On a lone order?
Huh?
On a lone order?
Yes. It's in the charter. Loan orders appropriations.
I think you're required to have a roll call on both the financial institutions require a record of the vote that was taken at each one of the meetings.
So I think you're a little confused. The first reading is not a vote, the first reading is that it has been presented to you for discussion and for movement. The second reading is where you have the vote. We always vote, we never not vote, we always vote, but we, the city tends to vote, the city council tends to vote at the second reading.
Counselor Brown, did you have a question as well?
But you may object to the first reading, and therefore this would have been the first reading, if you objected the first time.
No further questions, Ms. Solicitor. Thank you so much. Counselor Robinson?
I would ask for an amendment, if we would send these back to the next meeting so that they can appear on the agenda in regards to transparency. I'm a little confused that these orders were sent to conference, and now we're going to take them out of conference and we're going to vote on them. I think the people in the community don't know what we're actually going to be voting on, because I don't really see they were really presented before this vote, other than being accepted and moved to a conference.
You want to put an amendment? Okay, Counselor Robinson amended this, the order to adopt, to refer to the next meeting and list it on the agenda.
So what, are we roll calling?
We can, roll call.
So we're going to do a roll call on the amendment to send it, to send it to the next meeting so it will appear on the, on the agenda. So a yes vote would be to?
To approve.
To approve that, okay.
Can you speak on, can you speak here?
Yeah, sure, why not, at this point?
Just for peace's sake, I'll vote to send it back to the conference. I mean, this is not something that we haven't done in the past, so transparency, I'm not sure why that word came up tonight. I believe most of us counselors were in the meeting this afternoon, most of us counselors were here on the 18th when it was accepted, filed, and sent to the Subcommittee. So I'm not sure why it's an issue today, but, you know, I, you know, I think we just should just go with the vote and vote it up. It's a second meeting.
Okay, so the amendment is introduced by Counselor Robinson to refer them to the next meeting and list them under second readings. Okay, that's an amendment, and the roll call would be a yes to approve. Counselor Garcia absent, Counselor Vido?
No.
Counselor Abzaneda?
Yes.
Pardon me?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
No.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
No.
Counselor Perlatonda?
No.
Counselor Tejada?
No.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero?
No.
One, two, three, four in favor, one, two, three, four, five, six opposed, one absent, the amendment is defeated. We have the roll call on the actual approval of all the orders.
So did you want to speak on the actual orders?
No, just want to ask for a roll call vote.
Okay, for the adoption of all?
Of all, yeah. Counselor Garcia absent, Counselor Vido?
This is on all of them, yes. Do you just read what they are?
Sure.
The amounts?
The first one is for the school department, $2,737.62, that's the corrected one, and then the other appropriations, streets and sidewalks, $30,000 from free cash, $15,000 from free cash, streets and sidewalks, $40,000 from free cash for solid waste trash containers, $260,000 from free cash to the DPW streets and sidewalks lights installation, $40,000 from free cash to the DPW streets and sidewalks overtime salary, $60,000 from free cash to DPW structures and grounds overtime salary, $40,000 from free cash to the Law Department Legal Services expense account, $170,000 from free cash to School Capital Stabilization account, $701,000 from free cash to the General Stabilization account, $100,000 from free cash to the DPW Structures and Grounds Building Maintenance expense account. Counselor Garcia absent, Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor Abzaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Perlatonda?
Yes.
Counselor Tejada?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero?
Ten in favor and none opposed, motion to the doctor, one absent.
Let me put this in here. New business. We have an ordinance introduced by Counselor Vido regarding adding a new section 6.1 of Chapter 6 to the Chelsea Court of Ordinances on Regulation of Vacant Buildings.
Can I have a motion?
Move to the conference.
Subcommittee on Conference. See, no objection. It's not necessary on that one.
It's going to conference.
It's going to conference.
Can I amend it to read that we were requesting a list of all vacant residents and all vacant commercial buildings be brought to the conference?
Okay. Got it?
I want to get vacant buildings and...
Can you repeat it again, Counselor?
Vacant buildings and residents, Bob?
Yes.
Okay.
Vacant commercial buildings and vacant residents.
We have an order introduced by Counselor Vido regarding revised Part II, Chapter 6 of the Chelsea Court of Ordinances to add a new section on short-term rentals.
I'll adjutate a motion.
Go to conference.
Move to Committee on Conference and request a list of all fees collected for this purpose. If any.
Any registry of, of any short-term rentals?
Anyone that's registered to do, to rent short-term rentals.
Do we, we don't, we don't have anything?
So.
Okay. Thank you. All right, Steve.
The third one, ordinance is introduced by Counselor Vido regarding revised Part II, Chapter 34 of the Chelsea Court of Ordinances to add zoning provisions on short-term rentals.
It's not religious?
That's got to go to the zoning board.
I'm sorry, Counselor Bishop? No, this one is, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Robinson?
Yes, it needs to be referred to the Planning Board and a public hearing needs to be set up.
And Subcommittee on Conference?
Subcommittee on Conference.
Yeah, Subcommittee on Conference, schedule a public hearing and refer to the Planning Board for recommendations.
We have an order introduced by Counselor Vido. Whereas the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has enacted several new laws around regulation of short-term rentals in Massachusetts, specifically Chapter 337 of the Acts of 2018, and whereas the Acts provide for local taxation of the proceeds from such short-term rentals, and whereas the City of Chelsea City Council desires to capitalize and realize the benefits of these Acts, now therefore be it ordered that the City of Chelsea accepts the provisions of Subsection B of Section 3D to Chapter 64G of the Massachusetts General Laws and impose upon an operator of a short-term rental an additional community impact fee of 3% of the total amount of the rent for each transfer of occupancy in a short-term rental unit that is located within a two-family or three-family dwelling that includes the operator's primary residence. All community impact fees collected pursuant to this order shall be dedicated exclusively to affordable housing and deposited in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Counselor Bishop? Move it to Subcommittee on Conference as well, okay. Yeah, like, read what's here, or you don't have to get stuck reading my whole thing.
All right, I'm going to just read this.
Yeah.
Ordinance introduced by Counselor Vido with regards to revised Part II, Chapter 34 An ordinance introduced by Counsel Vido with regards to revise part two, chapter thirty-four of the Chelsea Court of Ordinances by adding section thirty-four dash one oh nine signs and illuminations.
Counselor Bishop? Move it to subcommittee on conference as well as, uh, public hearing?
Public hearing.
And refer it to the planning board?
And the planning board, yeah.
But it will go to conference?
It will go to conference as well, Counselor Bishop.
Conference, planning.
Public hearing. And now we're on F, right?
We're on F.
Yep.
An ordinance introduced by Counsel Vido revising part two, chapter fourteen of the Chelsea Court of Ordinances to add a new section fourteen dash ninety-one on outdoor cafe and dining areas.
Counselor Bishop moves it to subcommittee on conference.
We have an ordinance introduced by Counsel Vido. Part two, chapter thirty-four of the Chelsea Court of Ordinances to add miscellaneous zoning amendments to further accommodate the outdoor dining use and facade improvement program.
Yep, and as well as a public hearing and refer it to the planning board. Subcommittee on conference, public hearing, and planning board. Thank you, Counselor Bishop.
Okay, we now have the financial orders introduced by Counsel Brown. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorize appropriation of $50,000 from the overlay surplus account to the assessors office legal service account.
Counsel Brown?
Refer to a second reading? Refer to a second reading?
These are the ones that came in this evening?
Yeah, these are.
So before we...
You want to refer them to second readings and have a subcommittee?
Can I ask a question?
I'm sorry?
Well, I'm sorry. Hang on one second, Counselor Bishop. What, are you just moving one or are you...
We want them...
For second reading to, um, subcommittee on con- finance.
I understand, but are we just talking about that one order or did you ask to group them?
Unless no one object, I mean...
No, I, no objections. I'm just trying to clarify. So you want to move the financial orders to subcommittee on conference into a second reading?
I object.
You object to?
To the first reading.
To the first reading?
On all of them.
Okay, so you like to move it to...
Let me explain why.
Yeah, you can't say anything else.
Okay, all right.
Killed the, killed the order tonight.
Okay.
Okay. Now, let me see. The next one would be... An order introduced by Counsel Recupero. Order that the city manager look into giving every homeowner of single-family homes and condos who is seventy years of older the right not to pay real estate taxes.
Counselor Recupero? Any, no objections? Counselor Robinson objects to the first reading.
You object to the first reading?
Yes.
Next order of business.
Next order introduced by Counsel Recupero and Counsel Lopez. Order that the city manager expect DPW and ISD to begin implementing and enforcing that constituents of Chelsea make use of trash barrels distributed by the City of Chelsea by January one, 2020.
Counselor Lopez?
I'd like to adopt, not to suspend you. If there's no objection, I would like to speak on it.
Any objections? Seeing none, you have the floor, Counselor.
Thank you. Uh, yes, I think I spoke about this last meeting. People got, uh, trash barrels by the city, and, uh, I have seen that so many people are still using the old ones that they have. And, uh, put in this order, we'll instruct DPW and ISD to start implementing and so people can start using all the barrels that the city, uh, provide for the trash. If we want to get better on less trash in the city, I think it's time for us to use the barrels. If we don't use it, why was the, the reason that we given the barrels? Thank you.
Counselor Recupero?
My fellow counselor, this, this will give people ample time to go out and figure out how they're going to do their trash. So by the next year, the beginning of next year, everybody should be using city barrels. But also, they can use the bags. There's nothing that says you can't use the bags. So if you're required to use the bags, you can use bags too. So that's a good thing. So it's not just that you've got to use the barrel. You can use bags too. But by next year, there's be plenty of time for the people of this city to adjust to that my fellow counselors that agree that it's time for them to use the barrels the city gave them.
Counselor Pelatanda?
I like what my fellow counsel said, but I don't know why we have to wait till 2020 of next year to eliminate all the old barrels. It's like everybody's got new barrels. They get new recycling barrels. They're going to be coming out with a new plastic bag that's better for the rodents. Why are we having to wait till 2020? Let's get rid of them now. Everybody's got new barrels. There's no need to keep the new barrels, the old barrels out there. If you need more barrels, you can call DPW and get more new ones. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
In the floor, city solicitor?
Sure. Counselor, yes, Counselor Cheryl. Long night. What's your question, Counselor?
My, my question is, would this, would we have to incorporate an ordinance for this to take place so that people would have to follow the ordinance in regards to the trash?
No.
No?
We have under our ordinance regarding forty U tickets. We've included trash collection and following the trash rules and regulations. I believe the, um, Board of Health has already amended the trash rules and regulations so that you have to put your trash out pursuant to DPW recommendations and, um, recommended barrels and bags. So we're all set. We could start actually issuing tickets and warnings if they are not using the barrels, um, that the city has provided to our homeowners.
All set?
All set, House.
Thank you. Thank you, um, city solicitor.
Next order introduced by Counsel Brown. Order that the city manager review the signature at the southeast corner of the intersection of Pembroke and Beacon and remove any unnecessary sign.
Counselor Brown? I'm sorry?
Adopt the order under suspension.
Seeing no objections, so moved.
Thank you, Madam President.
The next order introduced by Counsel Pearl Tonda. Order that the city manager provide the council with mobile phone numbers of all department heads to have in case of emergencies.
Chair recognizes Counsel Pelatanda.
I like the doctor's suspension. Yeah, I'm just looking at like some type of business card or something that the councils can have just in case we can't get in touch with, uh, the city manager. We need to get in touch with a department head in case of any type of emergency. Gas leak, water main break. I know we have numbers for people in city hall departments, but we don't have exact lines to get in touch with them in case of an emergency.
Thank you. Next order of business.
The final order introduced by Counsel Vido. Order that the Chelsea City Council hereby approves a conflict of interest exemption pursuant to the Massachusetts General Law, chapter two sixty-eight A, section twenty B, for a part-time position of library desk attendant aide at the Chelsea Public Library to held, to be held by Jay Velez.
Counsel Tejada?
Roll call vote, please.
Roll call.
A yes would be to approve.
On the motion?
Yes.
I know in the, I know in the past that, um, there had been people who had requested an exemption who had a full-time city job to be able to coach, uh, in football or basketball, and were told that they couldn't receive two checks from the city. So I don't know, um, where this stands in regards to this order. I don't know if the city solicitor might want to weigh in on it.
Okay, we'll suspend the rules and we'll ask the city solicitor.
Just as a little background, Mr. Velez happens to be, um, a library aide working for the city. Um, he's going to begin to be apparently a son on the school department. He will eventually be leaving his library aide position. In order to hold two positions, and we do this a lot, especially when there's a lot of teachers working at community schools and vice versa, under the State Ethics Commission, the council exempts somebody from holding two, um, positions by the same, by the same municipality. And the school department is part of our municipality. Yes, Mr. Velez, um, his wife is a school committee member. She has filed a disclosure. She does not hire parent liaison. That's a role of the superintendent. So we have, I don't know if that answers your question, but we have complied with the State Ethics Commission.
Do you have another question?
Will, will he be receiving two checks, one for, from the school department and one from the city in regards to working in the library?
Yes, temporarily until he leaves the library. He's not staying a library employee, but he has to transition out of his position and until Ms. Gay hires his position.
Does he, does he have a, a exit date?
I don't believe she's posted the position yet, so I, I don't believe so, not yet.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Cheryl. Oh, sorry.
Is this the new part-time position that just came out of the library that was posted?
No.
No?
No, actually. So that's prob-, that's why the transition has been, um, a little longer than we would like because she has to hire those positions.
All set, counselors? Thank you.
Are you yet?
Do you have a question, Counselor?
No.
Go ahead.
She was there, and I thought I heard you say it's a practice that we've done, but is it a correct practice that we can do? Because now you say that he doesn't have a transition date. He could be receiving checks for... I thought the ethics thing was six months for something I read today about state ethics. After you leave one position...
Well, that's not leaving the position, so you're, you're, you're... So we always allow, like, for example, people to hold two positions under, um, working for the city. We've got a lot of teachers who also teach at community schools. It's two different jobs. They get two different checks. You guys have...
From the city?
From the city.
Okay.
You guys have exempted them for years.
Okay.
So this, actually, we're going the other way. We have someone who's a library employee now working for the school department, but he's not going to be doing it long-term like those people, like the individuals who teach at community schools.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
So that, that means that he's going to get two checks from the city itself, right? So that's a practice that it could be important to anybody? So let's say some, not just this person, another person. There would be no objection with him doing the same thing, right, or her?
So as long as, I mean, you have to understand, both positions are not full-time positions. So yes, it's okay. So you can receive...
Is that the new standard policy that it's okay?
No, it's been going on for a long time that you can receive, you can perform two positions if the city council exempts you from the law and receive the two checks. The city council in Chelsea, because we need to fill the positions at community schools, we do it.
Okay, thank you, Cheryl.
Okay, a motion on the floor from Counsel Tejada for roll call. If you vote yes, you're granting the waiver. If you vote no, you're not granting the waiver. Counsel Garcia is absent. Counsel Vido?
Yes.
Counsel Abzaneda? Absent. Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Pearl Tonda?
Yes.
Counsel Tejada?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Bishop?
Yes.
And Counsel Recupero. Nine in favor, none opposed. Two absent. The motion for waiver is granted.
All right, public announcements, and can we save, um... What are they called? Moments of silence. I am so sorry. Could we save moments of silence to the end? Public announcement, Counsel Brown?
It is Black History Month, and we, um, Black History, um, there's a lot of community events going on for Black History. I know myself and Counsel Robinson is participating in a community event where everyone is invited, and that will be, um, February eighteenth at seven thirty-eight Broadway. It's going to be like a dinner, cook-off type dinner where we have different teams, and we're going to be cooking a lot of good foods and stuff. So if you'd like to participate and you want to bring something down, um, that you think the community will enjoy, feel free. If you don't, you just want to come down and have a bite. Um, there's really, some really great things going on. This past week, um, we were at Bunker Hill Community College with the, we had a film on the... What was it? Tuskegee Airmen. Tuskegee Airmen, sorry. And prior to that, we did a, um, an event over at the library. There's a lot of stuff going on on the twenty-first. There's also a super women's event there that's at the, um, not the library, but the senior center. So it's in the local newspaper. We open arms up to you. Please come down. It's going to be some great food. Last year, we did it, um, for the homeless and veterans, and I think we had about forty folks there, but we had more food than we had people. So if you want some good food, come down. Seven thirty-eight Broadway, five o'clock, and I believe it's the eighteenth? The eighteenth, thank you. Monday. It's the holiday. President said.
Counsel Recupero?
One is, the city is giving you back your residential sticker. It came to your mail. So make sure you look in your mail and you get your residential sticker. So if you don't have it, go to city hall and tell them your new sticker didn't arrive because they're going to give it, they're going to, they just gave you a new one. So go over there if you didn't receive it to get yourself one. And the second one is, pretty soon they're going to start working on Essex Street. There's going to be a major disaster when they start working there because the road's going to be all clogged up. So I don't know how the city intends to fix that problem with Park Street and Pearl, which goes all the way up that way. So I don't know. Maybe the city should figure something out how to help the residents that live within that area for alleviate the problem a little by relaxing their parking restrictions on it.
Um, I just want to expand a little bit on what Counsel Brown was saying. Um, the C-, the Chelsea Black community, um, the CBC puts on a variety of events. So you should really look up on social media or feel free to call the office because they have a bunch of events that are happening in the month of February, and they're all usually amazing. Um, they do, they do a good job. Uh, Ms. Cromwell does an amazing job of making sure that, um, she runs a tight ship. So just make sure that you look into it. Counsel Pelatanda?
My fellow counsel, Mr. Recupero said, don't come out, if you haven't received your sticker today, tomorrow, the next day, don't come up to city hall and flood the clerk's office saying you haven't gotten your sticker yet. Give it some time. They are getting them out to everybody. They'll get them in a timely fashion, so please wait. If you believe that you haven't got it in a timely fashion, call the clerk's office and ask them before you come up and start flooding them because there's going to be lines out the door and, you know, they're working diligently to get them out. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Tejada?
Uh, yeah, so if you're a homeowner and, uh, you have lead paint in your house, uh, Chelsea Restoration right now is, uh, running a program. They run it once in a while, but it's very short-term. Uh, and it's a loan, it's a loan product that you don't have to pay back unless you refinance or you sell your home. But you get the benefit of getting the property lead compliant. Uh, if you have children under the age of six living in the property, uh, you don't want them to get lead poisoning. So it is a great program for the residents of Chelsea. If you own a, uh, you know, one, two, three, or four, you can go up to four, uh, as a first-time homebuyer. If you own a property like that, this is a great way to increase not only the market value, but the safety of your property, and it doesn't cost you anything. Thank you.
Any other public announcements? All right, moments of silence. I'd like to have a moment of silence for our city manager's mom, Margaret Ambrosino, who passed away. Anybody else? James Malachowski? Seeing no further business before us, we're adjourned.